I have a screen up here, so it's hard to tell. We're good? All right, thanks. All right then, the regular session of the Planning Commission in the city of Lancaster will come to order at 5:03 PM. I'll offer the invocation tonight, and Commissioner Moore will lead us in the pledge. Could please stand? As we meet to serve our community, to use our resources wisely and well, to represent all members of our community fairly, and to make decisions to promote the common good, we recognize our responsibility to the past and to the future, and the rights and needs of both individuals and community. We seek blessings on our deliberations and our efforts here today. May we act wisely and well. In his name I pray. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Another roll call, please.
Chairman Voss?
Here.
Vice Chairperson Harvey?
Here.
Commissioner Cook is absent. Commissioner Moore?
Here.
Commissioner Paris?
Here.
Commissioner Tufts is absent. We have a quorum.
Thank you. For our fellow commissioners, as well as the public, we received notice over the weekend that Commissioner Cook has decided to resign her position on the commission. We're very grateful for her service for the last 12-plus years on this commission, and previously she served on the Architectural and Design Commission of the city. So at any rate, I'm, I have mixed emotions on making that announcement, however, folks do need to move on with their lives and retire and seek other opportunities, I guess, so. But again, we're very grateful for her service. Next item on our agenda is public business from the floor. Any person wishing to address the commission, on, excuse me, on any agenda item is requested to complete a speaker's card for the recording secretary identifying the agenda item you'd like to discuss. Each person will then be given an opportunity to address the commission at the time such item is discussed by the commission. Speaker cards are at the rear of the chamber. Individual speakers will have the opportunity to speak for three minutes on each item. However, the applicant, if the applicant chooses to address the commission, is generally given a little more time, particularly if it's a complicated project, to share information with us.
Chairman, if I may?
Sure.
I'd like to also thank Commissioner Cook. I'm sorry. Commissioner, was it Commissioner Cook or? Yeah. Commissioner Cook is a phenomenal human being, phenomenal commissioner, and I would like to take back the first part because she's even a more phenomenal human being than she was a commissioner, and she was a phenomenal commissioner. So I'd like to thank her as well.
Thank you. All right then, the first action item on our agenda is the approval of the minutes of a regular meeting of March 14th, 2022. Have a motion, please.
I move to approve the minutes from the regular meeting of March 14th, 2002.
Thank you.
I second.
Thank you. It's moved and seconded. Any further discussion? Please vote. In a minute. Well, there we go. Passes 4-0, thank you, with Commissioner Tufts absent. All right, the first item on our agenda is a new, gosh, excuse me. Is a new public hearing, and this is on conditional use permit 22-03. The applicant is Quick Quack, which is a car wash opportunity. Ms. Swain is the presenter on this.
Chairman Voss and members of the commission, before you tonight is conditional use permit number 2203, which is a proposed car wash that would be located at the northeast corner of 15th Street West and Avenue K, within the boundaries of a new commercial center. The car wash would consist of a 3,596-square-foot building that contains the car wash tunnel, office, employee lounge, and restrooms. To the north of the building would be three car wash prep lanes that would feed into one lane through the car wash, traveling in a west-to-east direction. Upon exit from the car wash, a total of 16 vacuum stalls would be available for use on the south side of the building. The hours of operation for the car wash would be 7:00 AM to 7:00 PM, Monday through Sunday. The car wash building would be in shades of light gray and cream with green and yellow accents. The base would be a dark gray split-face concrete masonry with a precision-faced concrete masonry border, also in dark gray. Green awnings would be placed over the windows and entryways along the south elevation of the building. All signage on the building is in accordance, let me do this one, with the approved master sign program for the center. Staff is recommending adoption of resolution number 22-11, approving conditional use permit number 2203, to allow for the construction and operation of a Quick Quack car wash in the commercial plan development zone located at the northeast corner of 15th Street West and Avenue K. I am available for any questions, and the applicant is also available for questions.
Thank you, Ms. Swain. Members, any questions? Comments? Not yet. Could we have the overall site plan for the, for the project development up, please? So the development is in what I would call the northeast corner of the proposed development?
The car wash is at the northwest corner.
Northwest?
Yeah, so.
Oh, okay, I'm looking at it.
Yeah, all the way at the northern boundary, basically located along 15th Street West.
And what's to the east of that?
The east of it is currently a multi-tenant retail building, which does not have tenants located within it.
Tucked back in the corner and no visibility, huh?
Correct.
Amazing. Okay. And then to the south is the next item on our, on our agenda, the Sprouts?
Correct, so.
And then further to the south?
So this right here is the Sprouts.
Okay.
This right here is the, is the Chick-fil-A that was approved under a separate director's review.
Right.
And then there's three other quick-serve restaurant pads along Avenue K, which includes Ono Hawaiian Barbecue, Dutch Brothers, and a Taco Bell.
Oh, okay. Explain to me what an administrative tract map is, please.
So an administrative parcel map is the subdivision of a piece of property that already has all surrounding improvements in, so that it doesn't actually go through a public hearing. So in essence, it's drawing lines on a map for the individual pads. So the, the individual parcels that you see on there are, they're, they were created through an administrative parcel map.
So in my 15 years on the commission, it's the first time I've ever seen an administrative parcel map.
So administrative parcel maps actually don't come to planning commission. They're an administrative.
No, I've never even seen it on an agenda, let alone before us.
So the reason it shows up on our agenda this way is because we have an administrative parcel map. It was approved. It's going through its final stages to record, but the current APNs are still valid, and so that was the only way to clarify which portion of the site certain developments were occurring on.
So really, what you should be doing is a lot merger, and the administrative parcel map is in effect doing that?
It's actually not merging, so there was two APNs, and it's creating.
Well, you're merging the two APNs and then creating five or six parcels, right?
Essentially, yes.
There you go. Okay, thank you. All right. So do we have any speakers on this item?
No speakers on this item, Chairman.
All right. Well, the applicants here, I don't know if they would care to address us this evening. We did not receive, however, what we typically get is what's called an uncontested letter from the applicant, so is it Mr. Livingston? Is that who the applicant is?
He's our architect. I'm Mr. Shannon, though I represent Quick Quack.
Can't hear you. Step up here.
I apologize. I'm Mr. Shannon. Shannon is the last name. Vance Shannon. I represent Quick Quack.
So, so you folks have read the conditions of approval, and you agree with them all?
Yes, sir.
Perfect.
Including those of the development that apply to us.
Perfect. All right, very good. Go ahead. Yeah, please.
Mr. Shannon, is this going to be similar to the Mr. Car Wash? Are you, are you planning to franchise it out, or are you a part of a franchise?
We are not a franchise. We, we own all of our own stores. We operate all of our own stores. We have 162 of them throughout the United States, similar to Mr.'s, I believe, in the fact that we're an express car wash.
Yeah, that, I, I'm a part of Mr. Car Wash, so that's, that's my understanding of it. I'm now going to switch.
I, I'm glad to hear that, actually.
Of course.
You will love it.
Of course, you're in Lancaster. I'm glad to switch.
Yeah, okay.
But do you plan on opening more in our city? What's the plan as you move forward?
We do. I believe we're working on one now that is going to be in Lancaster, and we usually, when we get into a market, it's, it's much a convenience issue these days, like anything, and people want them to be very conveniently located for wherever they shop.
Close to freeways.
Things like that, freeways where they live. Yeah, so we absolutely will bring more in.
The 162, are they all in California?
No, sir, they're in the western United States. We have, I think, gosh, I should know that, probably 90 or so in California.
How many in Southern California?
I really, I'm sorry, I don't have that number.
How many in LA County?
I don't even have that number. I, I just do the entitlements, and once I'm done, I'm happy, and there's a checkmark that goes up on the wall.
You do the hard work.
But, well, it seems like it sometimes, but I think there's a lot of hard work all the way through, from the leasing all the way to construction. It's a beautiful store. You know, one of the things that, and thank you very much for your presentation, Ms. Swain, that's, it's water conservation, water conservation, water conservation. So when we wash our car in the driveway, we use about 150 gallons of water. When we wash a car at Quick Quack, we use 23 gallons. We have a reclamation system that we filter all of the water that comes in. Some of it is used for the rinse at the end, so that's clean water that we've actually purified further.
How do you purify it, if I may ask?
Reverse osmosis.
RO?
Mm-hmm. And deionization, too, I believe, is one of the, one of the systems, and that's just for the rinse, so the, the first portion of it, that water's being recycled all the time. And our water goes into the sewer as opposed to going into the stormwater system where you would go if you were washing it in your driveway.
So we've dealt with a few issues where the water has actually come out onto the street because of cars coming through, and we've had accidents occur because of that. How do you, how do you deal with those type of situations?
We have what we consider the best blowers, dryers that are available. We develop about 80% of our own equipment, and we try to get that car as dry as we possibly can before it leaves, not just for what you're mentioning, which is, which is a real-case scenario, but also for the cleanliness of the car, so it doesn't spot and that kind of thing.
Is this, well, obviously, this isn't your first one. Have you had any issues like that, that have been brought up by any sort of people that have been hurt because of sort of, you go ahead, you, you know where I'm going?
Yeah, I apologize for interrupting you.
No, no, it's fine.
No, we haven't. You know, in this particular case, we don't go out onto the main road. You're leaving and exiting through the center, so by the time you're out, your, your tires are well-dried. But we, we have a pretty careful operation, and we really haven't seen that kind of an issue. I know it can be slick when it's wet, and that's what it is, but we try to dry them as much as we possibly can. I'd say it's just a, you know, a dozen feet or so as you exit the, the wash itself that you'll see it wet, and then it's pretty dry after that.
Have you had any situations where a crash has occurred in any of your other facilities?
We had one case that I'm aware of that was an elderly gentleman that mistook the gas pedal, the brake, excuse me, for the gas pedal. That was due to his age. No one was hurt, including him, and his insurance company didn't want to pay for it, and because it was his fault, but we did.
That was kind of you.
We do a lot of charity work. We do, and, and that's just one example. Every store that we open, we have a grand opening that we promote with, we, we find an individual or a family in the community that, that is deserving. When we open, we have, we promote the opening with them. We do not charge for the car wash the first day. Everything we collect, we double that, add a little to it, and we present that to that family. An example, we do the 12 Days of Giving. I have a video. I can't show it because it's too long. It goes, it can go on forever, but we have the 12 Days of Giving where we got about $490,000 last year. Just, just a small portion of that, we were able to purchase eyeglasses for children that would not otherwise be able to afford them. So, and we do many, many things like that.
This question's, you know, not really pertinent, but I am curious. Was that 490,000 out of all of your facilities?
It, it was, I believe that was all of the facilities together, and then we have the different regions be, have a choice in, in their charity that they want to, to participate in.
That's lovely, thank you.
Thank you. It, it's a great company, it really is, and, and we pride ourselves in cleanliness, and it's, it's a first-class show. You're going to find that they have white button-up shirts and ties on in, in every location, and, and you'll find a much better experience than you've had.
I am looking forward to switching.
I am, too, yeah.
Can't wait to take that sticker off.
Very good. And you need no sticker, by the way. We have a license plate reader, so in one of the three lanes opens the gate, you go right in as a member. Can I answer any other questions or share anything more?
That's actually really awesome for anyone who doesn't use Mr. Car Wash.
You can come to hearings with me in the future, Mr. Paris, if you would like.
Stop it.
So it's, I mean, it's a nifty system. You don't have to pay, you just show up and, and register your license?
I didn't.
That's not what quietly said.
I'm not sure it won't get there at one point, though.
All right, very good. It's Shanna?
Yes, sir, Mr. Shannon.
Mr. Shannon, thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else have any questions or comments? No? All right. Thank you very much.
Thank you for your time. We look forward to being a part of the community. Thank you.
All right, we don't have any speakers then?
No speakers.
All right then, it's appropriate to close the public hearing without objection and consider a motion.
I move to adopt resolution number 22-11, approving conditional use permit number 22-03 for the construction and operation of Quick Quack Car Wash in the commercial plan development zone located at the northeast corner of 15th Street West and Avenue K, APNs number 3123-009-038, 3123-009-039, parcel A of the tentative administrative parcel map number 83447.
Thank you.
I second.
Thank you. It's been moved and settled. Anything further from anyone? Please vote. Looks like four and one absent, right? Four yes, one absent. So the motion passes, and your project's approved. Good luck with it.
Thank you very kindly. Thank you all very much.
Mr. Shannon, if you can wait till we're done, I'd like to speak with you at the end of this.
Sure.
Thank you.
All right, the next item is also a new public hearing. It's conditional use permit 22-05. Public hearing is open on this matter of Sprouts Farmers Market. Ms. Swain?
Chairman Voss and members of the commission, before you tonight is conditional use permit number 2205 for an alcoholic beverage control type 20 license for off-sale of beer and wine for the Sprouts Farmers Market that is currently under construction. The Sprouts Farmers Market is going to be a 23,256-square-foot grocery store that features natural and organic foods, and the hours of operation would be from 7:00 AM to 10:00 PM daily. The total sales area of the building is 15,229 square feet. The display of alcohol is located at the rear of the building and will occupy one end cap, one side of an aisle, and two refrigerated cases for beer and wine. The total amount of alcohol displayed is 53 linear feet or approximately 592 square feet. Sprouts Farmers Market is considered an incidental off-sale alcoholic beverage establishment, and as such, the square footage of the sales floor area dedicated to alcohol cannot exceed 2,500 square feet or 5%, whichever is less. The alcohol display area for the proposed use would be 3.9% of the total sales area, which is less than the maximum allowed. Staff is recommending adoption of resolution 22-12 for a type 20 ABC license for Sprouts Farmers Market, and I am available for any questions.
I actually do have a question, if you don't mind, Chair. I didn't see it called out. Perhaps I'm missing it, but this does not require any distance waiver?
It does not. It's an incidental off-sale. It does not require any separation distance waivers.
Thank you.
And you mentioned to me earlier that you'd received an email from the applicant indicating they concur with the conditions of approval?
That is correct.
Very good, thank you. Members, anything?
Actually, Ms. Swain, the closest liquor store?
Closest liquor store?
Are they only selling beer and wine?
They're only selling beer and wine.
Excuse me, I apologize. Closest beer and wine establishment?
Is probably going to be the AMPM on the south side of Avenue K.
Thank you.
Do we have any speakers on this, Ms. De La Cruz?
There's no speakers on this item.
None? All right then. Anything further from members? No? All right then, we'll close the public hearing without objection and consider a motion.
I move to adopt resolution number 22-13.
Thank you. Second, please.
I second.
Thank you.
The resolution is 22-12.
22-12, 22-12, I apologize. I was looking at Royal Investors, I apologize.
And I second 22-13.
12.
12, 22-12.
That's my fault, I apologize to everyone in the room.
It's a Monday.
So you're adopting.
It is a Monday.
So it's adoption of resolution 22-12 and approving the conditional use permit 22-05, right?
Correct.
Okay. All right, anything further? Please vote. And a motion passes 4-0 with Commissioner Tufts absent. Well, congratulations to Sprouts. It's going to be a great addition to our community, that's for sure. All right then, and the third action item before us tonight is also a new public hearing. This is a public hearing on tentative tract map number 83232, including a variance number 21-02. The applicant is Royal Investors Group LLC. So without objection, the public hearing's open on this item, and I believe Ms. Campana is the presenter?
Yes.
Please proceed. Thank you.
Good evening, Chairman Voss and members of the Planning Commission. This item before you is tentative tract map number 83232 and variance number 2102. The proposed project is located at the northwest corner of 60th Street West and Avenue K12. It's surrounded by vacant land and single-family residences. The proposed project is for the subdivision of a 20-acre lot into 86 single-family residential lots in the R7,000 zone. The lots range from 7,000 square feet to 12,414 square feet. In addition, the proposed project also includes a request for a variance for lot width and lot depth. And what you see in blue is the lots that have the lot depth. The shortest depth is at 94 in the minimum, and the R7,000 is 100, and the shortest, and then highlighted in yellow is the lot width, and it, the shortest is 60 feet, and the minimum in the R7,000 is 75 feet. So the surrounding tracks in this area, there are a few that were approved in 2005. It's upstandard lots already. For instance, there's one that has a 6,279-square-foot lot and a corner lot width of 57, so this is similar to the surrounding area. In addition, the project west is a Vontee South, and in that planning area, there is, the minimum lot size is 2,000 square feet, and then the minimum corner lot width is 55 feet. So this would be compatible to the existing land use and the surrounding homes. So Focus EIR was prepared for the project because it's above the vehicle mileage traveled requirements. Our projects must limit the generation of VMT to 15% or more below the Antelope Valley planning area, as you see up here. The proposed project is 26% over the threshold and is unable to mitigate the VMT impact. So the EIR evaluated and assessed two alternatives, no project and a reduced project alternative. So the reduced project alternative, it would reduce the overall VMT, but it would still have a significant and an unavoidable impact, and in order to reduce the VMT, then the project would need to be a lower density, which would not be consistent with the R7,000 zone. Therefore, staff recommends that Planning Commission adopt resolution number 2213, approving TTM number 83232 and variance number 2102 to allow for the subdivision of 20 gross acres into 86 single-family lots, a reduction of corner lot width and lot depth standards, and certifying the final Focus Environmental Intep report, and adopt the associate findings and statement of overriding consideration. That concludes staff's presentation. The staff and the applicant are here. In addition, we also have our consultant, Janine, from Aspen.
All right, thank you. So the package we received and reviewed was 371 pages long. This project has been in the, in the mill for a year and a half?
That's correct.
There were 300 pages in the, in the draft environmental document and final document, including the mitigation monitoring program. I was most interested in reading the California Department of Fish and Wildlife's comments. I hope the state allows folks from the California Department of Fish and Wildlife to actually go out into the field and take a look at a piece of property before they spend tens of thousands of dollars of our taxpayers' money writing a letter which doesn't apply to the project. A pond on the property? I mean, give us a break. Anyway, they have their job to do, and they're doing it from the comfort typically of wherever they sit. However, they don't have the benefit of going out into the field and walking the project or having any sense of the surrounding elements. That's just my editorial comment. However, the mitigation monitoring program that you've recommended then touches all of the items, biological as well as. touches all of the items biological as well as the issues touched on drainage issues, which are actually not on site, either in the public right of way or some hundred feet adjacent to the property, right?
That's correct.
Okay. All right. Very good. Thank you. Members, do you have any questions, comments?
Unfortunately, I do again.
Go ahead.
But tell me about the frontage. Has that changed the frontage allowance that we allow? It's horribly worded, but please forgive me.
So just to clarify, is that for the variance for the lot width and lot depth?
Well, I'm worried about the lot width and lot depth affecting the frontage.
The frontage still meets our minimum requirements.
And what is that again?
That is, let me pull that up.
My fear is running into a Rancho Vista setting again.
You're what? I'm sorry. I didn't, I didn't hear you clearly.
If, if you, if you drive through the Rancho Vista section, the frontage has changed immensely compared to what we allow. And I just, I just want to make sure that we're not, we're not following those unfortunate guidelines.
That's in Palmdale, Rancho Vista, no?
I understand that. Yes, yes, I just want to make sure. I didn't see anything in the, in the, in the actual document saying that the frontage was changing. I just wanted to make sure.
That's correct. So the minimum lot width is 60 and all the lots meet that requirement.
Perfect. Thank you.
All right, anything further from members? We did receive an uncontested letter on this item from the applicant as well. All right, do we have any public, are speakers on this item?
There are no speakers on this item.
Really? Okay.
Oh, I'm sorry, there is a speaker. We don't have a speaker card, ma'am. Would you? Oh, you can bring that over.
My name is Kate McMurtry. I'm a resident.
Hold on, wait one minute, please. First of all, I want to make sure your audio's on. Is it?
Mine is.
Is the audio on, on that?
Test, test.
It doesn't appear to be.
How do I turn it on? Test, test.
Ah, there we go. I have a hearing impairment, so you can just talk to me like you would if you have a young child.
Okay.
And if you don't, you probably have a sibling, right? Hi, and what's your name, ma'am?
Kate McMurtry. Kate McMurtry.
Thank you.
Sure.
Right ahead.
I'm just coming as a resident. I live in the allotment that is directly north of this planning project between K, on K10. And in general, I have two concerns. One is the topic of safety and one's the topic of traffic. For safety, I have witnessed and heard a lot of high-speed driving and/or racing on 60th Street West and on Avenue L between 60th and 70th on a routine basis. And I see evidence of accidents stemming from that. I link it to stemming from that from, anywhere from donut car, you know, tire marks in the streets or glass or shattered vehicles. And so I'm concerned, it wasn't clear to me, just looking at the maps here, that any kind of additional residential placement in that area spilling into those streets, I think could cause an additional safety concern, especially if the high-speed driving isn't addressed in that area. From a traffic standpoint, routinely, if I leave my house to go to work going south on 60th Street West, without leaving an hour early for work than I need to, the traffic is significant on 60th between K10 and Avenue L. And it's backed up, I'd say, at least a quarter mile with the light and the school and the kids getting dropped off on the side of the street. And there's not a really good placement for the drop-off and the pickup. It's substantial. So adding more residential area to that traffic issue in my mind, I just don't know. I haven't heard how that's been addressed or mitigated. So just wanted to air those two concerns as a local resident. That's all.
All right, thank you for your comments.
I would like to ask you, are you, what are you, what are you expecting? Are you asking for more lanes on 60th?
I guess I was hoping for a better understanding of how those concerns are being addressed, if maybe the commission can talk about what, you know, whether there's an acknowledgement of the high-speed issue that's been evident in that area and what's being done to address that. And then from a traffic standpoint, if there can be an elaboration of how traffic was considered for that four-way intersection with respect to the plans.
But you, you're not dealing with any, any racing inside your community, right?
No, not, not in K10 or K8. But I forget, that's the main thorough, throughway that connects my neighborhood with the one further north. There is absolutely high-speed racing that happens there and donuts that mark. And it's very unsafe when you're driving in and out of the community. It's extremely unsafe there. But then right when you turn on 260, that general with the divider, that is a significant area of high-speed driving in the evening, once the...
Would you agree that the more dense the population is in the area, the less high-speed travel you find?
I don't think I can make that statement, that claim. My concern is just based on the residential areas that exist that I think would be significant enough to mitigate something like that because there is enough public traffic and a public eyes on the road to me to maybe deter someone from using that as a high-speed driving area. But so far it hasn't. And the fact that there's a school there, it has not. So I don't have any confidence that adding additional residential area is going to create a solution.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Sure, thanks.
Any further from the members? Any further speakers?
I don't believe there's any additional speakers, Chairman.
We don't have any other cards?
We do not.
Okay. Very good. Thank you. All right, then, it would be appropriate then to close the public hearing without an objection and consider a motion on this item.
I move to adopt resolution number 22-13, approving tentative track map number 83232 and variance number 2102 to allow for subdivision of 20 gross acres into 86 single-family lots and reduction of corner lot width and lot depth standard in the R-7,000 zone located at the northwest corner of 60th Street West and Avenue K12, APN 3204-008-048, and certifying the final Focus Environment Impact Report.
I second, but I, I would ask to, I'd like to ask Ms. De La Cruz, what are we doing to deal with what she's talking about?
I definitely made some notes. And ma'am, if we can, where to go, if we can connect, we regularly meet with our local traffic sergeant to highlight some of these hot zones. And I can gladly get your information so that we can have a further discussion.
Ms. De La Cruz will work with you to be able to figure that out, make it safer. That's our goal.
All right, thank you. It's been moved and seconded. Any further comments? Motion passes 4-0 with one member absent. All right, thank you. All right, that concludes our action items for this evening. Ms. De La Cruz, do you have any announcements?
Yes, just a few. One item is the meeting, the June meeting. You should have received by now an email mention, sorry, his face just made me smile, mentioning June 20th as a holiday. That would have been our regular meeting. And we are proposing to meet the agenda review day, which would be June 13. That would be the regular, that would serve as the regular meeting. So we would meet a week prior. I believe the majority of you have confirmed your attendance, so thank you for that. As you know, the, the group is a little smaller, so quorum is very important. So thank you for responding. And just a couple of updates from our staffing. Wanted to briefly give a couple of introductions to a couple of members that are on our staff that you may not have seen before. First, I'd like to introduce Kendall Brecky. It's the young lady that is sitting towards the back there. Kendall is a, just to give you all a little bit about Kendall. Kendall is a Santa Clarita native. She graduated from Cal State University Northridge with a bachelor's degree in urban planning and a minority in sustainability. She has previously worked for the city of Malibu and now comes to us from the city of Santa Clarita with five and a half years of planning experience. She comes to us as one of our newest members of the planning staff. So as you all know, planning is small but mighty. And we are very, very grateful to have an added member to our team.
Congratulations and welcome to our little group.
And thank you.
Thank you. It's an honor to be here and an honor to meet you all.
And another, another face that I'd like to introduce is Rosa Oriana, who is one of our newest engineers. Not that new anymore, but during the last couple of years, we haven't been able to make a formal introduction. Rosa has a degree in civil engineering and has worked in the traffic engineering field for four and a half years. Also a Cal State Northridge alumni, also previously worked for the city of Santa Clarita.
Where's, where's that?
It's not, you know, it's not our...
You steal from Santa Clarita regularly, don't you?
It's not our fault they choose to go. She previously worked for LA County Public Works before Santa Clarita. And her focus is on traffic engineering, safety, and working through systemic issues with the city of Lancaster. So we are very excited, again, to have Rosa on our team. And I just wanted to highlight that she is here this evening and wanted to introduce her to the planning commission.
Welcome to our little group.
Thank you. Nice to meet you all as well.
And that is all I have for this evening. June, we are scheduled to have a pretty full agenda. So just moving things along. And Commissioner Moore is also making a face, but we should be...
Are you going on holiday in June?
You know what? I won't be able to attend that. I will be up in Davis, daughter's graduation.
Okay.
I said yes, and then I didn't look at the date, so I apologize.
We can, we can figure that out. Thank you, though. That's all I have.
Well, you know, that all depends. With a seven-member commission, we need four for a quorum. We have four here tonight, so it would be imperative that Commissioner Tufts attends. I notified you that I may not be in attendance. So it just depends on the client commitment, so.
Absolutely. We can also look at some alternate date options for the month of June. Or we could also just explore the overall calendar. We, we'll make it work. We won't delay.
Well, we'd like to, you know, obviously there are projects in the pipeline that need attention and we need to deal with them, certainly.
Absolutely.
It's not fair of the applicant to hold them up, certainly, so.
Yeah, we'll make it work somehow. We'll find alternate dates or whatever options we have.
I won't know for a while. As soon as I know for sure, I'll let you know.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, now's the opportunity for public business from the floor. This would be an opportunity for the public to address the commission on any non-agendized items. So if you'd care to speak to us this evening, please fill out a speaker's card, give it to Ms. De La Cruz. And you get three minutes if you'd like. Do we have any speakers?
We do not have any speakers.
Okay, very good. All right, then, anything further from the members before we adjourn? Nope. All right, then. So we'll stand adjourned until a special or possibly regular meeting of June 13th, 2022 at 5:00 p.m. All right, thank you and appreciate all your work tonight. And good luck to you all on your projects.